All right, we'll get started on our regular council meeting. Welcome to the Gilbert City Council meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-four. The time is six twelve P. M. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Pontenin?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councillor Polis?
Here.
Councillor Skensich?
Here.
Councillor Heitzman has stepped out just for a moment. He'll be back later. We also have city attorney, chief of police, operations director, and clerk.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. If you'd all please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I don't believe we do have any additions. Very good. The consent agenda for the city council minutes, boards and commission minutes, invoices from previously approved projects, invoices for campground, payments of bills and payroll under proper audit of clerk and mayor. We'll make that motion. Motion by councillor Pontenin, supported by councillor Skensich.
Polis.
Councillor Polis. Any further, I did something. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None. Motion carries four zero. Do we have any public input for tonight?
I just have a quick comment.
Sure.
So I think we may have figured out some of the chicks what's the situation with the audio and zoom is. I think it because we only have one microphone on the clerk's laptop and that is not hearing some of the microphones. So my only request would be, we hear the council fine. It's usually all the other microphones that we have a problem with. So if people using the other microphones could just make sure to be close to the microphone and make sure it's on. That helps Wendy and I be able to hear the rest of you.
We'll try to keep them on top of that.
Mayor Fiddy?
Yes.
Just an update with that, too. Our I T is going to look into about maybe an external microphone that we can plug in. That maybe that'll help. So we're going to look into that cost-wise and see what we can do.
Excellent. Any other public input? Thank you. We'll move on to the reports from mayor and council. I really have nothing at this time other than to remind the citizens of the calendar parking. I know we haven't had much snow and no snow clearing, but, uh, which is nice. And the weather's going to be warmer in the next couple of weeks, it seems anyways, so. But just please still, calendar parking's in effect and just follow it. With that, I'll pass it to councillor Pontenin.
Yeah, last meeting I said I'd look into the solar panel and it's looking like we need to get some, collect some information on that and possibly write out an ordinance. So the people that are looking to put up their panels and looking for permits to do it, have patience. It's going to take a while for us to get all our ducks in a row here, so that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, councillor Heitzman.
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Polis?
Uh, the only thing I got is we talk about this every year, but is the fire hydrant cleaning and how important it is. Um, actually, I see the chief sitting out there now. It's going to get with him at some point. We'll put maybe a group together that if there's a hydrant that's getting buried or something, that we'll just go out and take care of it or get some volunteers to take care of that. So we'll work on that together. So that's all I really have.
I talked to you last year and asked you if you had a map of all the fire hydrants. Do you have? Because I know with our.
You got a map where all of them are?
Yeah, pretty much all of them.
Excellent, because I know last year I did shovel some and they were buried and I had no clue where they were. So that map would have been helpful, but excellent. Councillor Skensich?
I guess just one thing for everybody out there, just a reminder, or maybe some people don't know. Sam was talking earlier that the school, they're going to be hauling the school away, starting, I think, Thursday, you said, Sam?
Yeah.
And they'll be using, what, Iowa and New Jersey?
Iowa, yeah, going uphill on Iowa and then downhill on New Jersey.
So watch for no parking signs. Sam's, Sam and her, police, somebody will be putting up. Just have patience, be cautious. That's all.
Thank you.
So that's going up the bank hill and coming down Lobst Door Hill, correct?
For people that don't know the streets, that's.
Move on to reports from staff, boards, and commissions.
Good evening, guys. I didn't expect to be here this time. As you all know, I was going to retire, but I couldn't stay away. Here I am.
We're glad you didn't.
Couple of things I have tonight. It's been a while since I've been up here, so I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update of what's going on. First off, I do have a couple requests. Our budget item one twenty-four, which is the para contribution that we have every year of thirty-five hundred. I'd like that to be submitted so we can collect the interest on it throughout the year as we normally do every year.
I'll move. I'll support.
Moved by councillor Polis, supported by councillor Skensich to pay the para of thirty-five hundred dollars. Any further discussion?
Yeah, is that, is that an increase then, right? It's supposed to increase?
No, that's what it's been for four or five years.
I thought we talked about increasing it a little bit.
That's just the budget number, a budget to number that they put in contribution every year.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None. Motion carries five zero.
All right. Uh, second request. It's been, uh, four years since we've been done an I S O audit in town here. Uh, back last November, or November of nineteen, we had them come in and do an audit, which went into effect March first. What that is, is they come in and do an audit and give you a rating for the city, which the residents here, you get a better rating, their insurance goes down in the area. So I'd like to do another one. I believe that we could get this rating down a little bit. Last one we did, we were a six plus before the last audit and we dropped to a five. Some of the stuff that hurt us on there was the age of our equipment. We have a new ladder now. Uh, there was some water issues that Sammy has taken care of in the, in that last four years' time, which was some of the big ones, uh, reporting on our training and stuff like that. We had some bone marks and that's all been, we've been doing that now for some years. So I'd like to try to get this rating down. It's no cost to the city. They come in and do this audit and hand it off to us and, but I want your, your guys' authority to do that.
I'd love, I'd love to see that happen. I'll support.
Yep, absolutely. Moved by councillor Polis, supported by councillor Heitzman to go ahead with the audit, I S O audit?
Yeah, I S O audit.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion?
Is that sent to the insurance agents then to notify them?
Yes, and that's actually who does it. And I have a copy of the last one if you want to look at it.
I know that's a big pain, uh, so thanks for doing that, Mark.
No problem. Chief. All right.
All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None. Motion carries five zero.
Okay. And Bob, on your comment there on solar panels, looking at an ordinance, is that something that you are gonna, if, if a resident wants to put a solar panel up, are you going to be notified of that as a city? Would it be possible if someone puts one up, I'd be notified so I can let our fire department know? Because that's a different way of fighting fire with, with them solar panels.
Do you have, do you or a member want to be a part of the committee to help with that, setting that up? Because we're working from scratch and we need to explore every avenue and safety. So that'd be probably a good idea to have somebody from the fire department there that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, uh, I'll, I'll myself when I'm in town, but I'll get someone else because I do travel a lot for work, so.
I recommend battalion teach chief damage, so.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, that, I mean, we go up to a residence that's fully, fully engulfed and don't see that, that could be tragic.
Absolutely. We need to cover every basis of it.
All right. Third thing I have, just a department update. We're sitting at nineteen members right now with one retirement on January second. Councillor Skensich retired after twenty-one and a half years of service.
Thank you.
I can tell you we're truly going to miss him. He's done a lot of work with the trucks and he's been a dedicated member for a long time, even before he came on, when he was a little kid, so.
We possibly have three more retirees coming this year, so we are, I'm on the crew, trying to recruit some people. We'd like to maybe get, uh, if we do have three, we'd like to stand at one mark, uh, just because we only get four, five, six members showing up for a call. That's why you guys see a lot of fire trucks at every scene. Uh, we had one of our first box alarmed for departments and, you know, that big up a fire not long ago. We had, I think it was seventeen fire departments there and I believe we had less than forty personnel.
Wow.
It's getting tougher and tougher, but you know, you have, like we keep telling, there are people, if you can make it, make it. But, you know, there's people I want to meet now, there is. So, uh, we're currently recruiting. Out of our nineteen, we have seventeen fully trained. I had a one class, firefighter, one and two, but has met our two newest members start their class here in February. So we'll get them through it. Calls for two thousand and twenty-three, we had forty-six page calls, twenty-four of them were structured fires. Zero wildland fires, two vehicle fires and twenty miscellaneous. Out of them were smoking the area, power line down, gas leaks, seal alarm, medical assist, water break, elevator rescue. And I'm cat rescue. So fairly normal here, we're usually between that forty and sixty calls, so hopefully this stays though. I do want to recognize one of our firefighters, firefighters, E M Rs, Mike Beal. He, during fire prevention week in October, he took vacation from his job at mine. He worked fifty-six hours on fire prevention kids in the area. That's phenomenal. We, I've got a lot of phone calls, he did a great job, so some of those.
Well, just in time. That's all I have. I want to thank, I want to thank you guys for what you do for the city. I've been to a lot of your houses and your tables full of papers and stuff. People just don't realize how much time you guys put into this and the naysayers in town need to put their name in the ballot if they think it's an easy job. So thank you all. You all do a great job.
Before you step away, Mr. Chief Kokowski, that, the evolifier that you were talking about, seventeen departments, forty-some personnel, how many personnel did Gilbert send? Do you have a ballpark idea?
I think we are at, we're at nine, ten, or eleven, maybe.
And that's my point, is that Gilbert has a, a long history of being one of the better responding departments in the area and hats off to your department for continuing that.
And I got to say, it's, uh, I get the privilege of sitting back and watching these guys work, you know, on, on a scene along with some of the other chiefs and I smile. Our department has come a long ways in the last ten years and, uh, they, they know what their job is. They go do it and they do it safely, so that's, that's another reason I couldn't step down.
And again, we appreciate you staying in and thank you for what you're doing. Next time you see Mike, tell him the council appreciates what he, he does.
All right, thank you all.
I just want to touch up on something with the evolifier. I, I got involved with moving a vehicle over there and chief was there running the show and it was smooth the whole time and he was always watching out for me if something was going to come down or whatever, so I appreciate that.
I wasn't, I was running the backside of the building.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yes, he was trying to run into the smoke and I kept pulling him back.
Thank you. City attorney, attorney Lindsay.
Mayor, no formal report, but I am happy to field questions if the council has any.
Thank you. Chief Teacher?
Well, we're not as loved as the fire department, department is, however, uh, I do have a couple of house, housekeeping items.
Warm fuzzies?
To elaborate on the take, now, obviously, we've, we're, K G M is running about a hundred trucks a day down our main street out of the old city dump. Uh, they're looking at about thirty-four hundred truckloads and it might be even a little bit higher now, so. Um, and then, of course, starting Thursday, we'll have another, I'm not sure how many trucks will be running, but we'll have several more trucks running through our town. As councillor Skensich said, um, we do have a plan. It's, we'll see how well it works with keeping everything blocked off. We will, we'll not be issuing parking tickets on Wisconsin, or I'm sorry, on Iowa Avenue to try to keep them on one side and keep the trucks going one way. We have had a lot of people, onlookers, and they tend to park in places that aren't very, uh, safe for the trucks, so we're going to probably limit any type of, uh, civilian traffic up there during the, the takedown and stuff, just because the trucks are moving, they shouldn't have to be look head, head on the swivels as these trucks are making the swings. I know some people are going to be upset about the, the route, but it's because they are side dumpers and they're several feet long, they can't make the curve, they can't make the turns. They can make one turn, but they can't get back in time to make the other turn into the turnaround of the school. So that's why we were kind of keeping that loop. Uh, the other reason is, is to keep that, um, you know, Sammy probably saw the accident by the post office last Friday. It's a very congested area, so we're trying to keep things just moving as smooth as we could, as we can, so. So that's basically all I have, so we will not be issuing parking tickets, but the detour that we have set right now, it can change anytime, we're just going to see how, how it goes, so.
And we're able to get the no parking signs up? I know Sammy.
Yep, and we've notified, actually Sammy notified residents with flyers to let them know what, what the game plan is, so.
Excellent. Hopefully, everything goes smooth.
And all I have is the agenda items tonight, so.
Perfect.
I just have one question. Ty, you talked about last time about the speeding through town, has that subsided now with them?
Yeah, so we work traffic pretty heavily. We also put a camera on that radar sign, so every time that a truck was going to the speed limit, I'd send a picture to the foreman. Uh, they actually, I think there was two drivers that were removed. Uh, one was for Jake braking, um, and the other truck was for habitual speeding. And the speeds weren't, uh, speeds where we would issue a citation, but thirty-five, it looks like that truck's rocking and with, with eighty thousand pounds onboard, it's, it's not safe. So, um, they've been very receptive to our, our concerns, so, yep, it's been, it's been going better.
Ty, on that eighty thousand, are they in winter rules now where they could carry an extra ten percent?
Yeah, so I, I've been working, I've learned a great deal of commercial vehicles last couple of years and, um, I worked with Sergeant Shea with the Commercial Vehicle Division and, um, a couple of issues that we had was he said, there's concerns, but you talk about the winter rule. This is a really odd winter and there's some disagreements whether or not the winter, winter rule should be on because of, they don't think the frost is very deep. So the concern is, will our main street hold up because of not very deep frost? So that's to be seen. However, the state has put it on where they can, like you said, they can run a little higher. However, every load comes through town, you will see their tag wheels down. So, and I've been sitting up by the, um, gate and it's kind of funny, they come off and they'll see me and you'll see the tag wheels come down. So they are required to have the tag wheels down, uh, because of the weight that they're running. So, um, yeah, so that's kind of what we're doing. That's, and now we're requiring that they're recovering the loads, so you'll see most of the loads are being covered. The initial, uh, the initial was not because most of it was, uh, cement, large cement chunks with rebar in it, so it was going to, it would tear the, uh, the tarps and it was larger chunks. So by statute, they don't, it's not considered aggregates, so they're not statually required to cover it. Um, but now the stuff that they're hiring, that they're hauling now, um, shy of, uh, was it the elephant dead or something like that there with bones, but they're, they're covering it, so. So, yeah, so the, the elephant thing is a whole different thing. It died during the circus, apparently was dumped in a, but anyway, that's a whole different story.
Did they find that?
We might.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, so, yeah, so now you'll see most of the loads being covered.
You mean there's an elephant carcass up there?
Well, there's rumors that, that a circus, uh, hippie elephant died and it was hauled to the city dump. And I don't know if it was the Gilbert City Dump or where, in the fifties.
Well, they used to have the carnival right down here, so it could have been well been.
So I don't know, I don't know anything about, I've been hearing this third hand and she kind of verified it might have been hippie, so we don't know, but it's kind of grown legs, so. So, yeah, so the loads will be covered here and you'll see that the tarps are on, so hopefully. And there has been very little debris on our road. It's, we've been very, they've been very good. In fact, uh, K G M is now required, I've been working very closely with Mr. Hedi and, uh, they've been, they're requiring the drivers to get out at the gate, do a walk around, make sure nothing's hanging off. So they've actually been very responsible.
Good.
Thanks, chief. All those things are really important. Appreciate you being on top of it all. And when this main street got rebuilt, the state was directly involved and said this would hold up.
Yeah.
So this is going to be the test for it, I guess.
Especially the weather changing again.
If you've been down by Wabix Main Street at all, but, um, that was supposed to be able to handle the winter, too, so.
That didn't. That couldn't even handle summer.
Yeah, sure didn't handle that winter. Yes, indeed. Thank you, chief. Public Works, operations director, Sam.
Yeah, I don't have nothing but an agenda on my end unless there's any questions.
I have a question. You brought up that you, just once about a time you were shoveling hydrants and didn't really know where they were. Could we just make sure before they are buried that there's, most of them have a flag, you know, an indicator on them?
Yeah, a lot of them didn't.
Well, we tried to get around to them and we'll get, we'll get going on some more. You know, with times being a little bit slow, that's one of the projects, all the guys do, let the mechanic make some flags. You know, we got a dozen, half dozen flags down there and we make some and start putting them up.
Thank you, Sam.
What I found was somewhere bent down.
Yeah.
And the snow we had last year covered it by a foot, so it was up, uh, I think Michigan, up by my place that I shoveled three of them out.
And part of the process on the fire department used to be, uh, every year we would go around and flush hydrants and that, we don't do that anymore as a fire department, so a lot of the members aren't necessarily as familiar with hydrant location as they were ten years ago.
Right.
Uh, so that having flags is helpful. Thanks. How many, how many do we have? How many do we have, if any, guess?
Last count was about a hundred and thirty-five hydrants in there.
Are those flags that you put up, are they like spring mounted flags? So they don't bend like you said?
I tried those ones. And what ended up, ended up happening is I ended up getting, uh, a lot of fiberglass slivers because of those spring ones were fiberglass and they're, after so long, they deteriorate. So I, I, then I went back to making them in metal once again. I think they're just a lot better. Um, if you're on scene, you could loosen up the one side and that out of the way taking up the thing starts splitting up the, the thing or the hydrant open. I think, uh, and they're cheaper for us to make. We just go with some odd stock from, um, the metal company and we usually have some scrap, uh, flags and weld, you know, kind of get a little jig up to a curve to bend them and they could just seem to work better and not the flag style or the spring style. And just because of that slivers.
Yeah.
It's been quite a while in duct tape trying to pull those slivers.
I bet.
It didn't take long for the sun to deteriorate those, those fiberglass rods.
Yeah, it's good when you got time to.
Yeah, pull them.
And I don't think we have to worry about the snow this year. Forty-degree weather.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This way.
The moisture's going to slap us again.
Had the comb before the storm, right? Thank you. Anything else for Sam? Move on to the campground doors, Wendy.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Um, basically, um, the only thing I want to report is that, um, the new system is working, but I ran into a few issues where I've had to call Paul. Uh, he's helped me a lot to, to get oriented with the program. Um, we did, again, um, just on the fifth week alone, we put the hundred and seven reservations and sixteenth, we got another twenty-five and then same thing, we got the only sixty-five, so we're, we're getting hooked really quick.
That's good to hear.
Other than that, um, I don't have anything else to report.
Excellent. Thank you, Wendy.
Yeah.
Mayor, I've got one thing for her.
Yes.
So Wendy, it, the, the increases don't appear to have stopped anybody from coming?
Oh, actually not. My dad, I had some complaints, um, but basically, um, they were kind of glitches in the system and, um, they've been fixed.
Okay, perfect.
But, you know, they're, they're, they're using the site mod if they want to. Um, they haven't said anything about, of course, I hadn't gotten to my last year's tamper check to, um, actually get their deposit and then to get their new, um, new amount because they got an invoice last year and it was for last year's rate, so they're going to have an increase this year.
Okay. Thanks, Wendy.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, I have a question. I have a question. Do the, the ones that are the year-long campers, do they sign up now, too, and pay? Or is that, or do they wait until the season starts? How does that work? The ones that are there year-round?
The seasonal?
The seasonal, yeah.
I think my dad would sign up right in January, right now.
All right, like everybody else who's retired.
Actually, they sign up before they, they leave.
Oh, okay.
In the fall.
Oh, they already signed up then, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're already in their site because we have to make sure that they can maintain. So nobody else can hook them.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I reserve them the, all before.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions for Wendy? Thank you, Wendy. Move on to the library. Is she here?
She's not here.
Sue's not here? Okay. Okay. Then we'll move on to the advisory boards. Paul?
And to uh to jump in and I pulled some some numbers today. I had to give Jill some numbers for some other stuff. And so I was in anyway. Um our our longer term goal is for the campground board to be able to provide a monthly dashboard. Um and so here's just some of the things that we're able to pull now with the new system. Um so far for for this new season, we have a total of four hundred and three reservations have been booked. Of those, two hundred and fourteen came from the data import from the old system to the new. Um that's about fifty-three percent of the what we have so far. And these are all as of twelve noon. So if Wendy got more in since twelve noon, they're, you know, the number might be different. Um so the number of reservations that came in once we opened up booking on the fifteenth was a hundred and a hundred and eighty-nine. Um of those, a hundred and fifty-eight of them came directly through the reservation portal, or eighty-four percent. Um in terms of what was what has now been paid in terms of reservations deposits, we've received twelve thousand one hundred and twenty dollars so far. Um that translates into an expect uh an expected taxable revenue for from both sites of sixty-two thousand five hundred and thirty, five hundred and sixty-three. Uh plus the non-taxable revenue, which is the seasonals, of thirty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-three for an estimated uh total reservation income of ninety-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six. Um there was a calculated tax um uh payment of that about ten thousand and change. So right now we're looking at just basically right now we're looking at eighty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. Um so that's, if you look back at last year, that's approaching probably forty percent of the revenue um for the season has already come in um with bookings for January. So looking really, really strong. In terms of occupancy and what we can look forward to, uh the total campground occupancy for the total number of days is sitting at thirty-one point three percent. Um that gets a little bit different when you start looking at specific weekends. So Memorial Day is seventy percent booked. Third of July week is between seventy-three and ninety-seven percent booked. Um call for the cure. We don't have data for yet because the reservations will open on people first or around then. Uh the first week of August is about seventy-eight percent booked. Um the sixteenth through the eighteenth, uh which is Scoobalooza, is about sixty percent booked. Labor Day is looking between sixty-five and seventy-one percent. And then Rock Rash, which is the last weekend, is about seventy-one percent. Um so again, all looking very strong. And then the last one that I pulled um was the referral source, which we're now asking people how they've heard of us. Um and probably one of the best numbers here is that um about sixty-three percent of the current bookings are all from returned customers. So that's really good news. That that shows that you've got a really high um loyalty as far as people returning year over year. Um we'll continue to to look at those, um you know, every single month and hopefully that'll give the council some better data. I know that um this year we really counted on revenue from the campground to fit into the budget for helping to plug some of the revenue um holes that the city had. And so this should be able to, this type of data should be able to give you much better information as far as where we're sitting and and uh funds that would be coming towards the city. So um if you have any questions, um the system seems to be working really well. I think all of the transition stuff is done. Um I've got a couple of things that we need to do in terms of crisis communications to have ready for next year. Um we'll be setting up the um the special event campsites. Um that will be a topic of our next meeting, um which is on the, I believe, it's on the seventh. Um so and then we'll be working on uh operating procedures now that we have kind of here's how you do things in the new system. So um but overall, I think um Wendy and I have been able to work through most of the stuff. Um there hasn't been anything that's really stumped us yet, so that's good.
Excellent. Thanks, Paul, for the work you do on that. And thank you, Wendy, for learning the new system. Anybody have any questions for Paul? And we'll move on to Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you. Um I'll first of all give a financial uh report. So as Paul stated, they've made twelve thousand and change. That bring our balance up to one thousand three or a hundred one hundred thirty-three thousand six forty-three ten in the campground fund. Um our general check-in, keeping in mind that January statements don't come out till the first part of February, but we currently have um one point one, almost one point two um in in the account, about three hundred thousand dollars in checks yet to clear. And we actually have the hundred and forty-two, one thirty-eight in this current agenda that you guys just approved. And we have our big bond payments. So there's the hundred and thirteen and change for the twenty twenty-two A and the thirty-two five for twenty-twelve B. And then our PFA loans are due at twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. So with all of those, and we have a pending I triple R B deposit for um that was from the campground. So that brings us to about five hundred eighty-seven thousand thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents currently. Um our savings and R C D, I get quarterly updates on those, so they're really not gonna change till the next quarter receipts. Um any questions on the financial update?
Yeah, on those bond payments, are those by annual?
No, some of some of our PFA or the others payment, some are due in February, some are due in August. And then the PFA ones.
So there's two payments a year?
Just these ones are due just in February and then the the rest of them are due in August.
Oh, so it's just a one-time payment?
Correct, correct. And PFA is usually always due by February first. Um this one actually actually has to is in by February twentieth. And then um the Warrior Kids, I think they've been doing really well. We would like to make a request to maybe have them move to the community center. Um they're getting a little busier. Got mom and other kids sitting out here waiting. It gets a little loud. So we're just kind of running out of room. Council decision, if you don't have a problem, the dates and times he's looking for is not an issue. And I believe they're during the day. So Sam and I thought we'd kind of just work out if someone needs to let them in or how they're getting in. But they are getting a little cramped in here, being that his um attendance is getting better. So with that, if you guys would be willing to let us move them over there, I think that would work for all of us.
I'll move. That's part.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to allow this group to use the community center. Any further discussion?
So is this a Saturday as they use?
He does Friday and Saturday, if I remember.
So is he gonna have a key access to that auditorium?
We'll have to figure out. It'll be just like a regular rental. They'll come get the key and they'll put it back in the drop box. Fridays, of course, is I think ten AM if I'm not mistaken. So we'll just make sure somebody will get them in or, you know, the library can help them in downstairs or whichever. But Sam and I figured we'd work out something with them and make it work.
Okay, was there any cleanup involved in that?
No, he actually does everything. Yeah, he does take care of everything here. So he would continue to do that down there.
Okay.
I guess, Mayor, that that was my concern is just the floors, especially this time of year. It's gonna get pretty bad.
Right.
With that many people.
And we usually let Tim Knowsick. He'll double check. And Sam and I just figured we'd work it out.
Is there a mopping mop available to him?
All the mopping stuff is and all that.
Yep.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those say nay. None motion carries, five zero.
That's all I have unless anyone has questions for me.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one other thing that I've got to bring up. Um we ended up taking the Christmas decorations down today. Um I just was wondering what your crisis, the council thought was on visible decorations. We left those up, we left them plugged in. Was there any date or time or or what? Or do you take those down as a screw or what?
I'm staying down the next forty-eight hours. I was in contact with Lois Archibald on the decorations, all the lights, electrical, and then the main electrical line. It is.
Perfect. Sounds good. Excellent.
I have a question on that. Is there any reason why we can't leave them up for a while?
No, we, I'm fine leaving them up. I was just told that they wanted them down. So I was like, okay, I'll keep them down.
Who wanted them down?
Well, when I heard the ladies really wanted to change it with the
They wanna do seasonal.
Oh, okay. Well, what's next? I I like it lit up. It looks great. So I I'd rather have it lit up than not. Are they gonna go?
Yeah, so it only costs about five bucks a month for a honey.
Yeah.
Are they gonna go like Valentine's next or what?
Those, I know they mentioned four, four holidays. Yeah.
Christmas. What else do you decorate for? Halloween, I suppose.
Halloween, Thursday, Fourth of July.
So the next one is uh?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
I say we just leave them up.
Yeah, I I like them there all winter. It looks great. I really.
It does. You did a fabulous job.
Leave them up.
If you don't mind leaving them and can schedule it to come back, I know it's an optimal time right now. There's not very much snow. The temperatures are gonna be moderate. It's a good time to take them down.
So we take all of our clients down in the spring once the ice and snow melted, just for safety and ice reasons. So if you guys are fine leaving them up, I'm fine leaving them up for free.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
It looks better.
Yeah, that that I I like it. Springtime.
It does look nice.
It sat there in the dark long enough. It's time for it to shine a little bit there. No, nice job. It's fantastic.
Very nice.
Do you have a problem with that, Sam?
No.
If you do, you're outruled.
Be nice for another month. Um we'll kind of keep the watch on just the wreath and the Christmas tree. I don't know if they're alive. I think, didn't they take those down today? I don't even know. The tree might be frozen to the ground. That's baked in. And then the wreath they took down is set there. I think it should be exposed to. Okay, we'll grab that tomorrow.
So they, do they come on but with the eye as soon as it gets dark?
Yeah.
Do they go off at a certain time or they're on until morning with the light? When it gets sunlight, then they'll come, they'll go off. So they're on quite a while. I'm sure it doesn't LEDs don't take much juice, yeah.
No.
It looks good.
No, it does. It does really look good. So.
Thank you. Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Cool.
Are you gonna be involved with the decorating with them for the other holidays or? You'll see when the time comes.
Don't worry, we won't hold you to it if you say.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to old business. Waste water treatment plan, water treatment plan update.
Uh waste water treatment plan, we're getting our David waste cranes in this week. Um and next week, uh we have two meetings coming up. Um next week on the twenty-ninth at nine thirty, maybe nine thirty and ten thirty, Peter Daniels and John Friedel Friedel is gonna be coming up there with Scantec. Um he'll be coming up and and touring. Uh John Friedel is, I believe that's how you pronounce his last name, um is he's a uh MBR, designed MBRs and done work on MBRs systems. So he's gonna be coming and taking a look at ours. Um and hopefully maybe giving us some thought on cleaning maybe the front end and some other situations we have going on down there. So um I know I sent uh an email to Brian and uh Mr. Mayor and Bob to join in tour with you guys. And then also, um I did get a, uh we did, we've been working with, uh I believe it was the EPA that I mentioned a couple of, I think it was October or even before that. Um but they were doing a grant program where they'd come up and give us some assistance. Um and take a look at our our sewer plant and hopefully give us any ideas um for to help with the operations of it. They are coming up on the thirty-first of January, that would be Wednesday. Um they said they would be coming, coming up if they want us to.
That's Wednesday, the thirty-first?
Yeah.
What time is that, Sam?
It's that one or?
Yeah.
Okay.
They said they should be arriving at one.
Okay.
And that, his name is John Tow, Towes, Towes, T O W N E. And he is with Midwest Assistance Program is what what they are, they're working for. And uh they were gonna get, we're gonna be in the tour. And I know Tara's been in contact with them. Kind of had a meeting here last, uh beginning of the week, had kind of ideas, what they needed from us and and different things on filling them in with our issues at that point. So yeah. But we'll see what terms of these things are more comfortable. Um the other, I'm not, and that's kind of all that's going on with this water side right now on coming up. And as far as the water, water plant side, um we did have a pretty good meeting through, through all meeting with Kevin Dunn from S D H. Um last, on the seventeenth of January, last week. Um he had some preliminary design plans of the plants that we looked at that we got. Um and they're doing pretty good. They're still working on, you know, some of them have done a few different locations, size and stuff. Um the one that he brought up, uh to the what on, we got two different designs of this uh filtration system, I would call it, the softening system. One is shaped like a cone and then the other one is shaped like a tube. Um so we just mentioned to them, I just mentioned to them, you know, where do we feel that's best for our situation on it. So um but they are gonna be coming forward sometime. I believe it was, I think he was gonna try to make February thirteenth work for the council, but I think they didn't come to me on that. Um I agree with that. They thought just to come do a uh presentation for the council for word of fact. You know, on that aspect, I don't have anything else.
Were you interested in going to that on the thirty-first?
My family situation is probably unlikely.
Okay.
But it is an off day for me, but I'd probably commit it.
Yeah, if you change your mind, let me know. I'll step down and you can go.
By all means.
And any of the rest of the council, I know we gotta watch our congregation, but.
For you to be there than for me to be there, Mr. Mayor.
Brian, isn't in a case like that, can't there be more than two? You know, it's just a tour of the plant.
We do have two tours, one on that Monday, one on the Wednesday. So just split yourselves up.
And the other thing you could do is you could, uh you could notice both of the tours as working sessions and then it wouldn't matter if you showed up.
Yeah, then anybody could show up, yeah.
True.
Do you have to post them in advance though?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe just do it with both of them and anybody does. Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You guys get any opportunity to show up. I know you're working and it's hard to do that, but the wealth of knowledge that Sammy and Tara give on these tours is it will help any decision making. So I'd encourage you to, if you get the chance.
More likely on the thirty or on the thirty-first, Ms. Aller. That Wednesday would be potential.
And has the council ever wanted to go through the plant to meet more Tara? I mean, we could do it any time. Um you know, it's it's not something that we have to do with these guys.
Right.
You know, to get for you to get eyes on it and what we're dealing with, obviously. Can you call if you will at any point?
Thanks, Sam.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Sam? And we'll move on to twenty twenty-four city engineering services. As I mentioned in our working session, strategically I would at this point to uh choose S E H Engineering for the city's engineering firm.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Polis.
One second.
Supported by Counselor Potman. Any further discussion?
Um yeah, just the I I guess I'm loath or reluctant to um part ways, I guess, with J P J just because of his longevity, his experience with the city, I think is that value is underestimated, in my opinion. Just because of his longevity, his experience with the city, I think is that value is underestimated, in my opinion. That's where I'm at with that, I guess. If there is a way to uh, retain his services or his company's services and and make him more involved uh, with the aspects of it that we need to address with the, especially the wastewater treatment plant going forward, that would be my preference, but.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Um, with that, Councilor Heitzman, we do still need to determine who would be our planning and zoning administrator, which J P J is currently doing.
And he's been doing that.
Currently pro bono.
Pro pro bono, correct?
It was more of a courtesy.
Courtesy, right.
But if he does not continue, we don't have one. So that's something we need to consider.
Before.
Or if he even wants to continue to do that, if he's not the engineer.
Correct.
Right.
I can't imagine he would want that if he's no no longer contracted to be the engineer.
Doubtful, yeah.
That's that's a no brainer.
I would suspect.
Project that will be continuing with J P J.
Yes, and then that I would include to the projects that J P J has pending currently, he would be allowed to finish. And I know he rattled some off, but Sam, I think, has a good mind.
I told John, if you guys get an appointment, we can get together and and go over the projects and all of this and some stuff up the cemetery that we need to finish. The approved project, the campground project needed to be wrapped up. Uh, the manhole project needed, uh, there's a bit, a little bit of stuff left over there. And then the lead and copper service line project.
And manhole project?
Yep.
Yeah.
So there's both five of these projects that are kind of still, they're just about done, but I mean, uh, there's still some finishing work, finishing work between the guys.
Yeah. I just wanna make it clear, it's it it's a strategic choosing. I I appreciate the years of service J P J gave us. Um, it's just looking for moving forward with the issues we have with the wastewater treatment plant, strategizing what's best for the city and what help we can get. That's my only reason I I'm suggesting S E H, cause they have the expertise in that field. So, and I wanna thank John for his years of service. But any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay.
Nay.
Councilor Heitzman's nay motion is approved four to one. Then we have the planning and zoning administrator on the next agenda. I
The history of that position's been hard to fill over the years. I don't, uh, Ms. Milas filled it last time. And she was willing to redo it, but the mayor denied her that. So I don't know if she would still be interested in coming back to serve as the administrator or not, but I I know we've gone many months without one.
Well, before that, Jim used to do it.
Jim did it, yeah.
Yeah, until we had someone, but that's what you wanna take on?
Yeah, Mark Saint Lawrence.
I don't have a problem with it. I would need probably some training or help from Sam as far as setbacks and I don't know how to, I don't know how to do that, but I mean, just to refresh her and then, you know, working closer with the planning and zoning board, I think that between that, we have no problem moving forward.
Just till we find if someone else is wanting to do it or.
I know I'd be willing to help you too with the
Right.
Getting, you know, your feet wet in it, yeah, right.
Right. We have experience. That'd be my appointment would just be to have the, have Jill do it for now with, until we figure it out.
Yeah. Maybe somebody will come forward and volunteer.
I'll talk to Beth and see if she wants to.
List of volunteers on on file, yeah.
That big.
Right.
I'll talk to Beth.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that was a paid position prior to Jim taking over.
It's been at times.
While Jim had it, it was paid. While Jim had it, it was paid.
Was it paid to?
Yeah.
Was he compensated over and above?
Yeah, he got a little bit more compensation for doing that. I know Eric Wedge did it for payment, but Mark Saint Lawrence didn't ask any payment when he was there. So it's changed, you know.
Yeah.
Let me reach out to Beth.
I'm only just to absorb it, you know, as long as I have help.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'll I'll reach out to Beth and see if she, for now, you know, Jill will do it until we find something.
Right.
She's willing to do it, so.
With, yeah.
Bob will help her, whatever, whatever she needs.
We'll get it figured out.
Cause that is a big part of the city, so.
Do we need a motion to appoint her on that or just to have her absorb it and?
Probably appoint her or that.
Brian?
Do we need to appoint Jill for the planning and zoning temporarily?
Yep, you wanna follow?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Polis.
Second.
Supported by Councilor Skinjic to appoint Clerk Zoller for the temporary planning and zoning administrator until we can find a a future replacement. Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, uh, do we advertise? I mean, how, do we aggressively seek that, uh, planning and zoning administrator? Do we more aggressively seek that than the the typical soliciting for volunteers that is usually fruitless? I mean, are we going to be more aggressively pursuing that than?
Let me talk to Beth first.
And I think you have to decide whether you wanna pay or how you wanna.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Do the position first or we advertise, I guess.
Could we maybe research what we've paid for next council and have that decision final that whether we advertise it at that point and what it's?
Yeah.
If we pay.
Like a minor.
Eric Wedge, Eric Wedge's payment, that's what you'd be looking for at then?
No, it was the weight.
What he was paid at the time.
No, Jim.
Or what council would decide now versus? Because even then, if Clerk Zoller takes it over, she should be compensated for it and we have to set that.
We did that for Jim.
So that's, so tell next council that gives us the research.
Perfect.
That's a good point.
Paid in the past, yeah, right.
I'll see what everybody around us is doing, so we have that first.
Yeah, this is this is just in the meantime.
Yep. Exactly. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero. And up next, the animal control contract.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I was tasked with looking into the increase that was requested by the Masabi Humane Society. I met with the uh, couple members of the Masabi, of the Masabi Humane Society. And one of the questions we didn't have was we didn't know how many animals we had in the past year or anything like that. Um, last year they ran with a about a twenty thousand dollar deficit in the red. Um, obviously, city contracts are some of the the larger donators towards towards the uh, facility. Um, so last year, we brought in or they picked up fifty eight animals. And I would say of the fifty eight, uh, they generally came and picked up about forty. There's times that we transport the dogs or the cats over to the facility, specifically the middle of night, um, where they've got some temporary uh, holds facilities for them. So we're, we were, we've been had five, a five thousand dollar contract since two thousand sixteen. There's been no increases. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, we went to Masabi Humane Society because they underbid, uh, which which was contented critters. Contented critters has now been kind of moved up to eely. However, they're still down in this area. Um, I've spoken with the uh, Evol Police Chief. And we kinda threw our numbers back and forth because he was looking at, do I go with Masabi Humane Society or um, contented critters? Between the cities, we we have about the same amount of da- animals that get picked up. Our average is right around forty five or fifty a year. Our worst has been as high as a hundred. Our lowest has been as 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 much as uh, twenty five dolla- or twenty five. Um, so if you look at, you know, the five thousand dollars that we uh, were paying, um, it was costing about eighty six dollars an animal. Um, I did ask them, what if we did a per animal contract with them where we just paid by the animal? Uh, generally, it's about two hundred dollars because when they bring them in, they generally revaccinate them. If they don't find the owners, they 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 hold them, they feed them. So there are costs and they do get some of those costs recouped during the adoption process. The cats is a whole nother issue. Nobody wants cats. Uh, they've got tons of cats. Um, I wanna say they have ninety cats in the facility right now for adoption. And they're fine, what they're fine is that people are stopping by middle of night and not just abandoning the cats, but um, they sus- they suspect five or six of the dogs that were relinquished. A lot of times they're twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old. Uh, they can't put them down themselves. They don't wanna pay the two hundred dollars for the euthanization, so they drop them off there and they're the ones picking up the bill for euthanization. Um, we'd brought three dogs over last year that were in that condition. And they paid the cost. If I were to go to uh, my vet, for example, it's about two hundred dollars to euthanize an animal. So you look at it, we're paying about eighty, so if you take the fifty animals from the five thousand dollars, we're paying about eighty six dollars and twenty cents per animal. Uh, with the increase of the contract, they're asking for six thousand, seven hundred dollars and some change, twenty three dollars. Um, if you took those numbers, um, that would put us at about a hundred and fifteen dollars an animal, which is still very reasonable. Uh, to put, for example, with what Virginia pays, uh, they had two hundred and twenty five animals that were picked up last year. Uh, they're paying forty one thousand. And uh, which is costing, which is, if you break it down, it's about a hundred and eighty two dollars per animal. So, so I wanna say we're getting a little better deal. Um, however, like I said, we oftentimes do bring the animals to the facility, so. Um, s- so my recommendation is, if you look at the sixty seven, that's about a twenty five or twenty six percent increase since two thousand sixteen. Uh, which is just lower three percent a year over the last past eight years. So the increases haven't been necessarily uh, exorbitant. Um, it you know, it's it's, it'd be nice if it's just a built in every year. They're looking at a five percent build in next year. Um, I plan on meeting with contented critters. Uh, there's discussions that they're gonna put a shelter off of Clyde Road. Which for us would be just as easy as for us to transfer animals out there as Virginia. Um, but at this point, this is kind of our option. I think it's the best option. Um, you know, the price, we're still paying less than other cities for how many animals we pick up. Evol had about the same amount of animals, right around that fifty to sixty a year. And I believe their contract is this year with uh, contented critters is gonna be right around nine thousand. So there's a little bit more. It just depends, I guess. So that's what I'm looking at. So I would ask that we approve the contract for the sixty seven hundred. I don't think it's it's out of line. Uh, doing the math, um, for eighty six dollars an animal, that's actually kind of a steal, um, to be honest with you. Um, the one thing I did ask them, I would like some numbers on is how many animals are picked back up? And I think we need to look at a couple things as the animals that are unlicensed. I think, I think that um, we need to be more aggressive on this, on the sighting of that and keeping track of that monies. And that money that we're citing for the animals at large maybe gets dedicated towards animal control, you know, and we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, but just for accounting purposes, at least, you know, we're not footing the bill for animal control for everything. We might as well let these people that are being, some that are irresponsible uh, pet owners, and it seems like it's growing, um, are footing the bill a little more than just us for for normal stuff, so. Um, but they have, it's, we had the one year we took forty eight, forty eight cats out of a house, you know, so some years are better than others, so. And as you know, we had counts, this last year, the council was approached by citizens about the animal problem. And we got aggressive on it and we started taking dogs and we actually did a search warrant for one of the dogs. So we're we're trying to do that, but we're being a little more aggressive like, hey, it's it's getting, it's getting tiring. People are sick of the dogs running around, so.
Yep.
I'll I'll move to go with the Masabi Humane Society.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman to approve the contract with the Masabi Humane, we're renew basically, right?
Correct. And to keep in mind, there's there's only a sixty day, we have a sixty day notice to get out of the contract. So if we give them sixty days, we can get out. So if we find that, you know, let's say, uh, the facility opens up down and they start taking animals down there, we can look at a competitive bid with them and see what what are they gonna do, you know, so that's certainly an option too. I don't know there'll be any savings, but it it might be worth looking into at least.
I don't know what other uh, service you're gonna get for eighty six dollars per.
Nobody wants to deal with them. You know, I'm I'm been working with Brian here just over the meeting. We're dealing with a case of uh, incident at a campground where uh, two people were bit and the individual took off to basically Indiana and saying, now you can't come get me. But so we're trying to recoup some of this stuff, so, yeah, he's working on that as we speak to try to get some closure on that, so.
Well, one of the, one of the biggest things is, like you said, they haven't asked for an increase since twenty sixteen and everything's gone up since then, so.
Yeah, and I kind of approached them that if you're gonna do these increases, it'd be nice to have baby steps rather than just come in with an eighteen hundred dollar increase, you know, twenty five percent increase and we're going. You know, and then they come when we've already set the budget technically, we've already looked at, you know, so it just helps us for budgeting purposes too, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, chief. Move on to new business. Charitable gambling request, Frankie's Fund.
I wanna thank city staff for getting me on the, or getting us on the agenda on such short notice. I think I called them Friday, so. Um, my name's Matt Heady. Um, we, my family, after my, the death of my brother, we started a nonprofit. And we run a scholarship, a yearly scholarship for Rock Ridge Seniors, um, and we focus on people that are going into trades. So we don't care if you're gonna be a plumber, carpenter, welder, millwright, any trades. Um, our last, last year, Ally Bitman was the recipient and we give away five thousand dollars each year. This request is strictly to hold a raffle. Um, we, we hold a Labor Day run, Labor Day motorcycle run in in memory of my brother and we do raise some money there. But this raffle is a way to um, really, really make it streamlined and very, very easy. And it, this'll also give us the ability to potentially give uh, more than one scholarship per year. We'd have to do a basically trial run, make sure that we sell all the tickets and that that would happen. So with the gaming controlled board in Minnesota, we have to have uh, municipalities um, permission to hold that. It would be Labor Day, so September second, it'd be at the Alibi Bar. Um, it would be in conjunction with the um, the Labor Day run that we currently have there. So I'm willing to answer any questions or.
So are those tickets only available on Labor Day? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, as soon as we have, um, it will, you know, obviously with approval, um, the state has to also approve the the license. So probably wouldn't have uh, that in hand probably till March or April. Um, we would have the tickets printed and we would start selling them immediately. Um, the plan is to have two hundred tickets sold at a hundred dollars per ticket. Um, we would give away ten thousand and then we would the ten, the other ten would stay to go to scholarships.
I think it's fantastic. I'll make a motion to approve. I'll support.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman, supported by Councilor Polis to approve the licensing for Frankie's Fund is the name of it?
Yep. My brother's middle name was Frank. We called him Frankie, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero.
Um, also, I just would like to personally thank uh, Chief Teacher. He's really helped us out the last two years. He does a really good job um, with traffic control and stuff, so we we really do appreciate that. Um, and then I just have to ask, um, I need a signature by some kind of staff, so if I have to stick around to get that or however that that's done.
Uh, no, we can sign it.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I wanna commend you for doing this, for fundraising and donating. Kids need that more with the cost of schooling.
Jer, now that you don't have to wear a face mask for the fire department, thank recommending those chops.
Chops.
That might be a good one for you. I'll work on it.
Actually, one last thing, if. Actually, one last thing, if you have any, if you know of any students, it's a Rock Ridge specific. So we do struggle to get applicants, even though it's a $5,000 scholarship. You wouldn't think that would be tough, but anybody that you know, family, friends of kids that you know, send them our way, send them to the council's way because we wanted to get as many applicants as we can. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, can you shut that mic off? It's still on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then on to, it'll be first reading ordinance, approved plumbing project. Yes. And that I have to read.
It's in the packet.
If it's in the packet, I don't.
You don't have to read it.
Okay. I just got to double check, because.
You read it last time.
Yes, I did.
I wasn't hearing those.
Oh, okay. I'm just going to make sure those coordinates aren't in there. Excellent.
So I had a question about this. So, you know, we're vacating it, but who does it belong to after we vacate it?
Once, once the property, the platted right away is vacated, the property reverts to the owner, the adjacent owners.
So that'd be the plumber, plumbing?
Correct.
Okay.
Typically, when you, so generally, if you have a street that you're vacating, one half would go to the joining property on the one side, one half goes to the other side. In this case, this was kind of a hanger-on from a vacation that had occurred in the past, so.
Yeah, just to clarify records. Okay, then moving on to the introduction, ordinance Sherwood Forest Recreation Area 91.12 B11.
Me, too. I drafted this, so Attorney Lindsey, if you can just make sure I can do anything incorrectly, that needs to be changed before we do the first reading. I mean, this is just a simple introduction.
And the form was just on. Do we need, excuse me, going back to this vacation of, or vacating of the, do we need a motion or anything on that? Or just that it's in the packet is enough?
Just in the introduction.
Yeah.
Sorry to bother you.
Nope, no bother. I appreciate, because.
Because I don't know. That's new to me, so.
Yep. So the introduction ordinance, I read that, so that we move on because we don't vote until next meeting, so.
And Mayor, if I may, and Council for the next one, the Sherwood Forest, if you remember a while back, the campground board made this recommendation as our current ordinance does not allow more than 14 days in a row where you'd have to move, so we're going to update that language so you don't have to move at the campground.
Right, so it applies to the seasonals. Okay, we'll move on to D, appointment of ballot board and election judges. And these are all confirmed that are willing to.
Mayor, if I may, they are not all confirmed. A majority of them are. And basically, though, we need to move forward with this just because of the timing for the election, so we have to elect what we have. The only thing that may not be set in stone is head election judge I have not been able to reach. Worst case scenario, I might have to come back in February and update the names just for the actual ballot board. The ballot board is the one that will approve and deny absentee voting and that's currently what's active, so that is good. Our, our regular election judges, so far, I'm only waiting on two people. Otherwise, everybody else is confirmed. Unfortunately, it's the most important position and nobody else is willing to do it, so.
I'll move. Support.
Moved by Councilor Skanjic, supported by Councilor Polis to appoint the list, the names for the election judges. And ballot board. Do I have to read the names or?
Generally, no, as long as they appear in the packet, then the votes will be contacted.
Yeah, perfect. Any further discussion?
So if there's a change in names, then that'll be just taken care of?
We'll come back and I'll update if there's a change and get that reapproval. Being that the head judge is the most important position and that is the one I currently cannot fill with confirmation.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero. And declaration of surplus property, resolution 2024-03.
These are the new water meters and the new electrical meters that are in place. Roughly, there's 182 boxes, there's four per box. And roughly, we're ready to go through every box, but there's four spots for each box. I'm just assuming that they're all full. So there'd be about seven hundred, or seven hundred and twenty meters, one, two meters. They're just household, real simple meters. I'm not getting rid of any of the three phase ones because those can be hard to get right now. I'm not too late now, I don't think any right now, but if I went to order one, it would probably be a couple of months before I got them, so that's why I'm not getting rid of any of the three phase stuff. These are single, single phase, maybe it's regular housing, these are very easy to get. Plus I have, I'll keep some for surplus, I might keep a half of them off as a separate, but I don't expect all of them to sell. These are the ones we would be putting up for bid, too, is the, the single phase actually. And then on the water meter side, the water meters are the ones that I, I don't think we can use them anymore because they were cast with lead, is what I believe. They don't have the lead stamp on them. So I don't think we can use them anymore. For those ones, I was just going to scrap out. Maybe get two prices, one for neither Radco, Hiving Salvage, and then one from, I was at Holmes, over 107, whoever gives me the best prices for that. Yeah, I did reach out to another firm, there was something online that they sent me an email, so we'll see what they said. It sounds like they, they, they scrap old meters or old water meters. So I did send an email back on Monday, Monday morning, put it up Friday. And then Ovivo stuff, I would do the same thing as a water meter, just get two prices.
And scrap them.
Another question on that.
Yes.
Do we dare, do we get rid of those yet?
That was a suggestion, well, I was talking back and forth with Brian on it. I don't believe Brian knows how we do it, for that stuff anymore, should we get rid of it? Or do we, would you, do we retain it? The Ovivo.
MBRs, for evidence.
The actual filters, the actual membranes, so long as we've had an offer. The question really isn't whether or not they're, they're failed or malfunctioned. It was that they didn't meet the spec. And so, I mean, so long as we've given notice to Ovivo, that they, they have the right to come and inspect them if they like to. Other than that, we don't have to preserve them.
Did you give any notice to Ovivo?
The question on those filters, is there a lot of metal involved with that where maybe Holmes won't even take them?
It's all stainless.
Oh, it is stainless, so there's a.
It's all stainless.
I mean, I thought there was the five, the membrane itself, isn't it a cloth type material?
The membrane is like a plastic or a paper filter. They demo the, they demo the.
Fabric.
Yeah, the stainless rum bit. And then they might have a chunk of, a small chunk of paper they might be running to the dump. I mean, so there's, there's, it depends on those scrap prices, it is art, but I believe there's some value there.
Oh, as long as, I thought maybe because there was so much fabric and stuff that they wouldn't even want to deal with it.
There's not only that, there's a lot of pipe works that, that, what they do, that's no good for it.
And it's all stainless, the pipes also? Only it should be worth something.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. There's, there's a couple trucks that actually.
Are you gonna?
Stuff right on the corner.
Right, yeah. Or did you say there was another outfit that could possibly bid on the scrap?
Yeah, I believe it's Hiving Salvage.
Oh, okay.
Council, if I may, too, just to, after the electric meters, what's bid, whatever's left over, we will then send those for scrapped as well, if, if they don't all sell.
Right. Is there a timeframe that we have to put it out or?
Well, for, for the, for the electrical meters, we're going to run it two or three weeks and see what we got. The last time I ran meters on a bid like this, I think we sold like fifteen boxes or ten boxes. It wasn't much, and, you know, so I know there was, had a meeting two, three months ago when I thought I got people getting rid of them. There's an Ovivo that I was looking for. We'll advertise, we'll probably run it for about two weeks. And then collect the bids at City Hall, maybe the opening bids.
Okay, what?
I would sell them, like the electrical meters, I want to sell them in groups of four, so you'd buy four boxes. And there would be four meters per box, so you'd buy sixteen meters in one.
Okay. Was there anything with the campgrounds, old firings or?
I didn't put those on there. I mean, we only had three or four of them. Now, that were, that weren't good, the other ones that all, all were scraps.
Scrap, okay.
They were burnt through on the sides, they were burnt through on the bottom edges and stuff, so we do have four of them. I, I wanted to call Wendy and Topher to see if she could save some of those or if those are okay to get rid of. But I know I need to talk to Taya, too, because, you know, he's got some, some stuff to get rid of this spring. I got some stuff.
So.
And then we'll get a fire truck to figure out what we're going to do and present it to the council sometime in the March, so we can put some of them.
Perfect. So this is just for these meters? Excellent.
And on that fire truck, I kind of, I reached out to a few people down towards the cities. And I think it doesn't matter where we put it, it, it's just getting some advertisement out there that it's there.
Mm-hmm.
Because even that F, that the fifty, I'm losing it, fifty-eight FWD we had, it was with Do bid. But once some people started sharing it around, word got around, so wherever we go, whatever we do with it.
Yeah.
As far as selling it wise. Facebook goes a, a long ways.
Oh, it does.
Well, let me see, we'll, we'll figure that all working on some stuff here and bring it forward sometime in the morning.
Perfect.
See, I want to be able to serve that fire truck if it wants to move forward. So when we do put it up for sale, it's, you know, if you see it running and, you know, it's sort of stuck in the smoke, that's what it is.
Exactly.
And depending, somebody might want to pump it.
Right.
Excellent.
So we need a motion then to put that up, is that seeking?
I'll make a motion to declare all that surplus property, give Sam permission to get bids and sell it off. Is that right?
Motion by Councilor Heitzman.
Second.
Supported by Councilor Skanjic to approve Sam to put these meters out for bid. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero.
Do you need a separate motion for the Ovivo equipment to get prices or that kind of covered up? It should all go on those.
Yeah. So yes, I just mentioned the meters, but also the Ovivo filters. The approval of Evlith fee office license easement, annual renewal of $130.
Did we vote on that? Did we, on that motion, did we vote on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I don't remember saying aye.
I did aye.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did.
You did two motions, but I don't think you guys said all of them.
Aye. Can we?
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember saying ayes.
Aye. Do it again.
Yeah, okay, well.
Because I crossed it out. I mean, did aye. Yeah, he crossed it out, too.
And that was on the last motion?
Yeah.
So, well, we can do it again.
I just don't recall that if we did.
Take roll call for.
We'd want a red flag.
What? All in favor, all in favor for approving?
Sam?
The, Sam to put the Ovivo filters and the electric meters out for bid. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero.
I'm interested to have this rewound, if I noted.
I'm pretty sure that we did say aye.
I don't think we did it.
I, it, it sounded like it to me, but I'm going deaf, so. Okay. The approval of the Evlith fee office license easement, annual renewal of $130.
May?
Yes.
Attorney Lindsey has already proofread this, so we're good to move forward. The fee has not changed in a few years and it's an annual renewal with them. I believe it's the pipe that runs through, is it R, is it RGGS? Is that what it is? For their property.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor, Polis, supported by Councilor Skanjic to approve the license easement, annual renewal of $130. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero. Approval of the annual MMUA dues of $2,349.
I'll make a motion. Seems like we can't not do this, so. Support.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman, supported by Councilor Polis to approve the annual MMUA dues of $2,349. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero. On to G, 2024 rebate program.
Mayor, if I may, just give a little more information. We met with Minnesota Power last Friday on this. We get maybe five to eight people a year that do this. We are responsible for the application fee and the rebate dollar amount. So what would happen is Minnesota Power takes the application, they do the eligibility, they do the receipting, they send us an invoice, we pay them. They send it directly to the customer that applies, so. And then the amounts are kind of listed here.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Skanjic, supported by Councilor Heitzman to approve the rebate program through Minnesota Power, correct? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries five zero. Undo H2024 application and accept fund if approved, IRRB resolution 2024-06.
May on this one, I'd like to apply for a grant to see if we're eligible. Thoughts and process for this particular grant are across the street for the lot. Once the easement goes in for her stairs, to backfill that, maybe put some green space. And then as well as some updates to the pavilion, maybe make permanent electricity there, put the lights. I think we were talking about maybe the columbariums or whichever you'd call them, I guess, from the school. You know, just kind of some updates there. You know, just kind of some updates there. Um, if approved, we can finalize in more detail, you know, maybe more benches, community garden, um, just something like that. So, that's kind of what the idea is at this point.
I'll move.
Support?
Moved by Counselor Pulis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to approve the application for I triple R B resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None, motion carries five zero. Yeah, I don't believe we had any motions from the working session. Do we have any miscellaneous announcements?
Oh, come on. Another one I just want to mention, um, I seen on, uh, Facebook last night that people were asking about bricks in school, um, if they could get them or not. No, it's an active, active, uh, construction site, don't go in there. There will be bricks available at a later date, um, they're gonna put them behind the fence and, I think, over Iowa, by the bus garage. Um, I will, I'll let somebody know, I'll put it on Facebook on concern citizens, when I know they can go and get them. Um, but they are gonna have bricks available for public, but not at this point.
And it'll be a first come, first served, so the city's not gonna reserve any or save any, it's.
I was seeing on, um, the post last night and I asked the, the, we, the, um, um, Carl Sanderson's guy up there, uh, if there is gonna be one. It will be at, at some point, but not, uh, where.
So, okay, it'll be determined. Excellent. Yes.
Should have spoken before, uh, on the right. I would recommend to the council to consider or to make a move on two things. One is the solar panel, uh, I recommend the, the city should be looking at, uh, implementing an ordinance. Currently, I believe all we have is a whole order for, I believe we got three or four people that are looking to tap in. And there's some liability of the captain without the city's knowledge. So, I think we need a city ordinance on, on, uh, solar panels that you should consider, maybe through the city attorney or something, but we are moving on that sooner rather than later. And then the other thing that I, I just noticed in a strange paper, that Aurora just established an EDA, economic development. And I believe it was last Friday when we met with Chris from Metro Party, and he recommended that the city look for, implement or start an EDA. Currently, all we have is the storefront generation, and that's got, on papers, got about a hundred and forty dollars in it, but the city, it's gone. So, we need to supplement that to keep that active. And I see Aurora, I've read the paper, and Aurora's, put it in the paper, that their economic development committee is gonna consist of city council, and I highly recommend to not go that route, you should have business people, as the recommendation says, some business people on the economic development. And that should be addressed sooner rather than later, because that stimulates, stimulates or encourages businesses to either come in or help existing or something like that. Those two items, if you consider to act on, sooner rather than later. And I don't know how, but I know we need an ordinance for the, uh, solar panels. Currently, all we have is just the whole, because I believe we have three or four people that are looking to tap in. And that could be very dangerous for, if you have a breakdown or, you know, where you, you could, you could easily, I mean, risk somebody with electricals, which people don't have any knowledge that they have it, especially for a fire department.
Yeah, we, we did discuss that Leo earlier and.
But I, I'm encouraging you to probably have to have a ordinance on it.
And our committee's gonna sit down and work on that. Absolutely, thank you. Anything further? Who have a motion to adjourn?
Well.
Moved by Counselor Heitzman.
Support?
Supported by Counselor Pulis to adjourn our city council meeting at seven forty-six P M. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None, motion carries five zero. Thanks, everyone, for coming.